Good evening, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Town Plan Commission together. At a little after seven PM on Tuesday, September nine. For the first time, we are going to be on cable access TV. And so, after we open the meeting, I'm going to ask that each one of us introduce ourselves by name and where we live in town, and then we will get on with the meeting of the day. So my name is Sid Smithers, I am chairman of the Planning Commission, I live in North Pownell.
Julie Weber, secretary, and I live in North Pownell.
Jim Winchester, Skyville Road, Pownell.
Rick Morgenthau, Brookman Road, Pownell.
And our zoning administrator?
Nelson Brownell.
Thank you Nelson. First order of business is to consider the adoption of the agenda for the special meeting that we're having tonight. The agenda is in your, excuse me, in your folder, yeah, I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I know too, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, the agenda for tonight's meeting is to discuss the town plan and the steps that are incident to preparing the town plan and using the consultant we are retaining to assist us in that. And Nelson has very helpfully agreed to be the contact person with the state and has entered the necessary information into the state website so that we can participate in the town planning process and submit our application for the grant, a municipal planning grant that we are going to seek electronically. The consultant has been listed as an additional contributor to that website, as has Linda Sharapa, who is going to assist Nelson in it. And Nelson has moved the process along rather materially, and our job tonight is to do two things, the first is to prepare a brief summary of the steps that we took in considering various possible consultants, what we did to go through the process of retaining the consultant and choosing the one we ultimately chose. And secondly, we are to prepare a statement for inclusion in the town plan as to why Pownell needs an update of its municipal plan. And I think I will start the first part by reciting the names and my memory at least supplemented somewhat by records that I went through this afternoon before hastily making photocopies of the process that we engaged in in seeking out the consultant for the town plan. We were given a series of names by Bennington County Regional Commission. We reached out to those people and I'm gonna name them. I conducted telephone interviews with a number of them and we invited a couple of them to come here for interviews, we interviewed those people and at the end of the day, we made a choice. The consultants with whom we spoke included a consultant named Randy Saxton, whose company is Place Sense in Port Henry, New York. A Peg Elmer. Mark Kane with SE Group in Burlington, Vermont. The Regional Planning Commission itself, we interviewed Mike Batchor from the Regional Planning Commission. And we also agreed to interview and follow up on a number of references given by Landworks. Yes, Landworks of Vermont, David Raphael and others. You reached out to a number of the references for Landworks, I know you spoke with or emailed Dick Horner at Killington?
That's correct, some of the references for a couple of the different firms. And I got some pointed answers and then we went forward based upon.
You shared them with us and we eventually interviewed Mark Kane from SE Group, we interviewed Mike Batchor from the Regional Planning Commission, and we interviewed David Raphael from Landworks. And at the end of the day, we took a vote here at a meeting and the choice, I found my little handwritten notes of the vote that we took and the choice was unanimous among the Planning Commission members who were here that we were going to hire Landworks or recommend to the Board of Selectmen, that the Board of Selectmen would hire Landworks, which we did. And the Board of Selectmen at last Thursday's meeting signed the necessary resolution in support of applying for the grant, is that correct Nelson? Signed the resolution that's required to go with that. Okay. So that is the process and we are gonna have to submit that Julie, so what I just went through in terms of the people we called, the interviews, the references that we spoke with. And I'm gonna give you one more name of a reference that. We spoke with Dick Horner from Killington and Mel Hawley from Virgin's. And you got email responses from both of them. So we will write that up as part of the minutes of this meeting and then excerpt it to give to Nelson. Now Nelson, in what shape do you want this to be presented to you for inclusion as part of the grant application?
The grant application allows attachments, so if there was a memo from the planning board.
In a Word document?
In a Word document, I'll attach that just as it is, so it becomes part of that application. I think that's the best because you guys can work on it, decide how you want the wording and when you're finished with it, we'll attach it to it.
Well that, that's a lot easier than I thought, I thought it was gonna have to be typed into a, into a form on the computer.
They limit how many letters per.
I saw that.
So if you did that, you'd be very limited.
Yeah, you could.
Here, I would try to keep, I would still try to keep it to one page, one of the things with these grants, you know, I've been through them before, is they really don't want a lot to read, what they want you to do is to be to the point, explain what it is your goals are and state what the benefit of having a new town plan will do. And if you can keep that to one page, that's a big plus, because they have lots of people that apply for these grants and the better wording and shortness will help you get through it quicker.
Okay, the second charge for tonight's meeting is probably gonna take a little bit longer although the reason why I went through what we've done before and the goals that we all developed for the master plan and what we hoped for Pownell and so on, and I've made copies of all of that and distributed to you. Is that we have to come up with a concise statement as to why the Planning Commission thinks that redoing the town plan is in the vital interests of the town of Pownell and the grants makers are going to rely on that our statement of why we think it's in the vital interests of the town to do this as part of their analysis as to whether or not we get a grant. So, if I can remind you, if I may remind you, we each came up with five or more reasons why, visions that we had for the town. And I think some of them may go toward constituting a concise statement as to why the town needs an updated master plan.
It also seems that Nelson put a few ideas on his grant application as well, though he's not on the Planning Commission, he's definitely made cogent remarks as to and ideas as to why things need to be updated.
And where did you find them? Because I'm happy to see them, but I'm not sure I've seen them.
They're in the part of the application process. And basically what they were, were things that I'd heard across the table from here. So basically what I did is I put them on here again in very short verses.
This is what you sent out on a couple of days ago.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Right. And again, I'll make us, remember that this is an application for a grant, this is not the town plan. You will be working on the town plan and writing the town plan with public important other things. So you're not trying to write a town plan when you put this in, what you're trying to do is write what you feel are the changes from what the town plan is today to what needs to be added or changed.
Or we're trying to write up what the goals of the community are that could be advanced by having an updated town plan.
That's right.
Okay, well, I know one that you talked of frequently was this whole idea of being the gateway to the state of Vermont and how we ought to own the gateway and we ought to.
Well, and that to me, I think that's really important, it's a marketing point to, you know, create some type of commerce, to create some buzz in this town. It might not be as relevant as, you know, certain building regs and dealing with the floodplain situation that has changed. But I think creating the gateway and giving it a buzz, one thing will stack upon another and it could lead to some good things. So marketing in that way, I think is important, I don't know that it's number one, but I think it's important.
Okay, I, I think one of the things that a town plan could develop and one of the reasons why we ought to have it is because it would enunciate more clearly what benefits will accrue to the town by being
Visible.
The gateway.
Yes.
Be accessible, okay.
Right.
I know that we have talked about revitalization of town centers and how we hope that that may be an outcome of a change in zoning that will result from a town plan which looks forward to reinvigorating town centers. As opposed to development of vacant land far outside of town centers which disperses development as opposed to bringing it together. So I think that could be something.
I think that is a really good point because right now it seems like we have two or three count quote town centers or potential town centers and that really stratifies the whole thing and spreads it out as you say. So we need to concentrate our efforts and have one and have it properly located where commerce would want to come and so forth that is also visible to passersby's, I think that's important in getting this thing off the ground. And everybody's effort can be concentrated in one area rather than so spread out.
I know that one of the things that we want to focus on as well is enhancement of and reinforcement of the assets of the town. We have an asset which is wildly underutilized in the form of the Mack molding plant which doesn't have any business activity going on there. And is there something that the town plan can, or resulting zoning can do by way of reinvigorating the opportunities at that location? We also talked about the Northeast Wood Products site at an earlier meeting, but it looks like that will be redeveloped, which is a good thing. And in the early discussions, we talked a lot about the track, of course, the track has now had a vision expressed for it at a meeting that we attended not too long ago, September, no, August.
Last meeting.
August, yeah, last meeting. And so, whether there's gonna be additional solar array there, whether there's gonna be music presentations, whether there's gonna be something else there, I think is something that we, the town plan has to try to get its arms around so that it will work for the community, whatever it is.
Right, right.
And so I think that's another reason why updating the town plan in this time of turmoil and seeming lack of direction would be a good thing.
I think it's important to separate what potentially is a good for the town and thereby dictated in the town plan, good for business and also supports the way of life that most people want to have here, and they shouldn't be conflicting elements. In other words, a commercial aspect should coordinate with why most people want to live here in the peaceful, beautiful valley, that type of thing. So it certainly doesn't deter commerce, I think, I think making us more visible will increase the likelihood that commerce will come here, maybe somebody will take over the Mack molding plant. But other things need to be in order before an enterprise moves in there and we can make it marketable to them in some way. The town itself needs to be marketable, at the same time, the quality of life is really important. So whether, if there's a music venue, you know, if, depending upon, you know, how often that is and so on and the fact that it's in a neighborhood, will that be attractive to people, will that support the quality of life that people come here to enjoy, or whatever it is, whatever the enterprise is.
True, true to your word, you're here.
I am.
Thank you.
And I'm so glad I don't live in a city.
You can introduce.
Just making the point.
You've heard us out here.
This is Rosemary Peltier, who has just joined us, another member of the Planning Commission. I would've, I asked everybody else to identify themselves, having just driven here from Boston, I wasn't sure you could.
Right, I can't.
I always.
But don't ask me to think too much more.
When I come back from Boston, I say, huh, people do that every day.
I know, I don't, I do not understand.
Just to drive. We did spend a lot of time focusing on our strengths. Three villages, number one, those connected to the wastewater treatment plant, number two, the accessibility of water and what our strengths are and which village probably could we work on to, we'll follow a little quickly. That's something we've talked about for years. And we do have, thanks to the past Selectmen's efforts about bringing the wastewater treatment plant to town, we really haven't fully utilized it, we haven't got it going. But it's there, the capacity is there to do more. And that's all part of this, is to, we hope somebody comes on board with us.
I agree, I, one of the things that each one of us mentioned in our aspirations for the town was that there would be some means of affording more affordable housing for people in a good housing setup for as many people as possible. Not competing with the trailer park, but supplementing them with good affordable housing, with sewer, with water and a rate structure or rent that is affordable. And I know we have a housing, affordable housing committee and we probably will during the master planning process, want to reach out to them as well. Other things that we want to mention, we could probably get a page out of what we've just talked about, but is there anything else that comes to mind either from the materials, I handed out to refresh your recollection? What I did was I printed up for everybody our goals and aspirations that we did. Also, also a meeting that we had with Jim Sullivan.
Can I have one?
Yes, you may. Sure. A meeting we had back in 2012 with Jim Sullivan, which talked about a number of suggestions that he had about things that we should be considering for the master plan. And then I also handed out the statute that has the thirteen required elements of a master plan. Not that we're gonna deal with this tonight, but we all ought to keep it under our pillow so we know where we're going.
Now, was, those thirteen different elements, was that something that we were talking of with BCRC dealing with and helping us with to, to just make sure that that is covered? Did we mention that or is that just?
No, I think, I think we're gonna work with Landworks on it.
Okay, okay.
BCRC has to, has to approve, after the Select Board approves the master plan, BCRC has to as well, but. Go ahead.
One of the things that a lot of towns, I was reading a bunch of the other town plans that are now just coming up for resolutions through the thing, is there seem to be working much more with their neighboring towns. The one that's Shasberry talks a lot about how North Bennington works with them because of the schools and other stuff. Peru, the rest, and I think when we're working on this, we need to take a look and see how our town fits in with the big picture. You know, Bennington is really part of our job market today because of our industry and stuff has really gone from the community. And so, when you do part of the plan, if you look at theirs, they talk about where the workforce goes and so forth. Come on, some of us drive to Troy every day, some drives to Pittsfield. You know, so we need to sort of look at that and see what that really means because part of the other thing in your plan is transportation and a lot of us commute today. So, we gotta sort of look at what that all means for our population size because those towns I spoke of actually have small industries of some sort, whether it's Mack molding or, or something. They do have a, I guess what I would call some base industry or a base hiring thing. And we really don't have that unless you wanna, I don't even know if the farm is the major employer now or not, it's probably. Yeah, because it used to be, the Strongwires was the largest employer in town, but now I don't know who, school, I guess the only one.
And maybe the town.
And the town, town could probably be the second one.
Whitey Food might be one, but that's seasonal.
Yeah, yeah, but those things.
I think Williams College is a big employer.
But again, but I'm, you know, it's, it's a close proximity to the thing, you know, I, I was interested in looking at how many people from Shasberry drove to Troy every day.
Yeah, Shasberry is fine, but down here in my part of the town, so in part of the town, it's Williams Town.
You know, you gotta look at how many people are going out of state from our small communities to work and it is an interesting makeup of where we are today compared to the days when it was the tannery and general cable Northeast lumber and the track, you know, those fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred people were all employed here. And they made up our rescue squads, our fire departments and everything else, but those are all the impacts if we don't have a base industry. We're losing them already and if we don't think of that somehow.
Indeed, there was a very good article in the Sunday Times a couple of weeks ago about how, what, how volunteer fire departments are really hurting because everybody's employed out of town.
Yeah, you can't get.
And even if they want to join, they can't get to the training and they can't participate as they used to. Anyway, that's a diversion, but it is a problem.
Yeah, well, and that's young employment.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things I saw on here was how do we get young people to live in town and stay in town? Part of that is finding employment because their, their pockets are not like the people who are more fluent and been around and worked for a while. Their travel is short usually, Williamstown or somewhere, and their income is limited, so if they can find more close by, they're not burning up with gas that's gonna be in another ten years.
It's just I'm doing math, you say I'm getting a job here for X many dollars and then you start to figure out cost of transportation basically, but there's a little paper out, monthly paper out from New York, the Observer. It's covered two areas, or two months ago in the Saratoga Springs and this month it's the Hoosier Falls area, Hoosier Falls. Couple of little things just fit in the right place, it started the ball going. We're there, we're getting close, it's just, it's gonna happen.
One thing we have going for us is that even for young people, we do have affordability. We've gotta make it a little more attractive, we gotta make it a little sexier for a lot of reasons, people would live here. And we can't say we're all, all of a sudden we have the jobs for them, but they might want to live here and drive to Troy because it's a nice place to live for a number of reasons. And, and that would be a great start, and then businesses may come on the backside of that. You know, sometimes it doesn't happen directly.
Right.
There's a little, you know, area here that got picked up, the old kid's school. Man bought that, fixed it up nicely, made three apartments and all three of them are rented. And they're not, you know, they're pricey. Some people from California, some people that worked at Manchester at the Fisher Place, you know.
Or, or this.
Or this. And I think the other people in the medical field, so Pownell isn't really dead yet, I mean, we have location, location. If you want to get close to Williamstown, is just say how much money is being spent over there every year, their new library, their new football field. The Clark has just spent a small fortune and, and it's gonna keep going.
Right.
It's the new dorm, I understand, is in the wake and new town office.
They're gonna take down the Williams Inn?
Well, that's in the talk, you know.
Oh, I think it's gonna happen.
Oh, it's gonna happen, oh yeah, Kyle's gone, and anyway, but it's, it's stone's throw, I. I just don't appreciate that, people don't appreciate our post office. It's so getting to be a handy place for Williamstown because of their location. But I talked to another fellow that came up today and he said I can mail a letter, he's from down in Mass, down on Lanesboro in Pownell and it gets there in two days, it's a longer time if I mail it down there for some reason, I don't know.
Everything goes to White River.
Yeah, okay, I don't know where they're supposed to Springfield probably.
Everything goes to Springfield down there.
So little things like that, but they do, they do paint a picture here that it's not as long as we think it is.
And there's not a waiting line at our post office.
Let's tick, let's tick off, let's tick off our thoughts on what it is that we can express in this grant application as reasons why Pownell's town plan ought to be updated. We've talked about revitaliz, the town plan will help us to revitalize, we hope, town centers is one. An updated town plan may propose a better vision for attracting industry to one location or another, the ones that we've thought of, Mack molding being the one that's properly zoned at the moment. Maybe as a result of the town plan, we will come up with another area that should be rezoned to attract industry. But certainly the building that's there at Mack Molding.
Commute on it.
Makes, yeah, I mean, that's, that's infrastructure already there. Making the town more marketable by introducing and aligning ourselves with some concept of being a gateway to Vermont, a gateway to the state.
And perhaps being important to the state that we are located where we are so for marketability and for the Vermont brand quote which is really in force in a lot of places throughout the state, that we're the beginning of it. And we, we should represent that for the state.
And our thoughts were, our thoughts were at a time, at one time that we should have a Vermont Products Center here maybe.
I think we can, I know we can, I, this is another thing, it's, you know, the tri-state. Your gateway's nice, but we, we have a lot of people, I have kids that work down in Ombiker, they come to Hoosier Falls. They come through a lot of, a lot of, you know, three forty-six is a major corridor and just the traffic between. The road, the road's been a pain in the neck getting repaved, but do you see the lines of traffic? Quickly, you add up as you're sitting in line waiting, I mean fifty, sixty, I went to Bennington yesterday, sixty cars were behind me.
Yeah.
In a short time, I'm saying, wait a second, where do all these people go?
Solar.
What is it, seven thousand?
Solar says.
Seven thousand?
Seven thousand vehicles, vehicle trips a day.
Which is below what they can, they drove.
It's below capacity, yeah, yeah. Okay. I think a town, an updated town plan will help us to recognize and tout and advertise our, our strengths and that's another reason.
You know, I think, and I think we've talked about it at this table, but I, and it may have been said earlier this evening, but the whole thing about, you know, the properties along the riverfront and, you know, the flood control, that, those kinds of things are, need to be enhanced in the plan.
Certainly, as a result of the zoning that might come out of the plan. The plan has a section on historic resources, so one of the things that I know we're gonna say is that we have to do things to protect, preserve and enhance historic resources. I for one suggested that as part of the town plan, we ought to be thinking about whether or not we're gonna foster ridgeline development of one kind or another, are there gonna be wind generation turbines there or are there not? And the town plan ought to think about whether those ridges are resources that we want to protect and preserve or develop. We ought to get input from the community, but I don't know that they specifically are a reason for advancing the town plan.
I think another one, I mean, when we were doing the survey, one of the, the sort of glaring needs was in terms of recreation. You know, and I think that's one thing that, you know, we, we have some properties that the town owns that may facilitate some, you know, but that, that whole piece is another.
And people say it's a social desert.
Is it true that the spot at the former tannery has a, could have a boat launch downstream from the dam?
Oh, yeah, there is, there is, there's a place that we're gonna use now.
Okay. And is there a portage to get around the dam?
It's the upper part that they're built, trying to build and find a spot for it, but below, once you get around the dam, they've actually built a, where you walk down with your canoe and go.
Who is they?
Hoosier Watershed Association.
There is a Pownell Water Association also.
Oh, is there?
Oh yeah, yeah, we've got it incorporated, got Pownell Hoosier River Water Association, we have a park.
You're the one who built those boats out of cardboard boxes.
Well, that, that was just a, a thing.
Milk carts.
But, but we've done other things, we've ever, ever cleaned up and the park was nice down there until some people used it badly. But Clayton Park was donated, a piece of land, three acres. But there's things you could put in. You could, you could reshuffle the cards and bring that back out.
Okay, okay.
So it's in place, there's a lot of things in place, we, we haven't dusted it off yet.
We talked about the traffic and how many people go up, back and forth of the road and how many people are waiting in line during all the repaving. And, and one, and one opportunity I think we're missing is, and I mentioned this before, is our visibility, which is part of our marketability. And especially at this time of year, when you drive down seven between Barbara Pond and, and Jimmy's place and the whole valley is there and you cannot see it.
Yes.
The trees are there, there's a turnoff there. But no, you know, if you don't know, you don't know and you're not gonna find out. It would be great to open, as much as I don't like taking down trees for the hell of it, it would be great to open up that valley because it's a beauty. And it's being wasted, it's a shame. And it could say to people, wow, this is a place I want to explore. Either I want to come back here with my bike or I want to come back here and look for a real estate broker. You know, whatever it is. This place is beautiful.
It is, it's gorgeous.
And I think we're missing opportunities like that, which in a heartbeat.
I don't think we can solve this tonight and certainly not, certainly not gonna be. But just out of curiosity, I want to know, you know who owns the land on that side hill?
Ber- Beringtons and Lonsbury owns the old Crowley track. Those are the two people that owns where the trees are.
The only, the only thing that makes it work now is because of the wires going over the bank and, and the wire, the electric people have somebody come in and cut them, so there's that.
Some areas.
There is, there is one little car.
Because of the wire, but I mean, I'm sure they'd like.
Well, they were dumping there and that's why they put the big fence up.
That's what they put they were.
All right, and I'm not even suggesting there's access to the land. I'm suggesting maybe we just take the trees down so we could see the valley.
Well, Jimmy can tell you, it used to be all pasture, those trees weren't there when we were there.
The Beringtons have relocated their fences so as to put cows on that side and they're going up that hill again.
That's good.
That's a good sign.
That's a good sign, because it'll, well, because it was getting overgrown.
No kidding.
But now running the amount of cows that they were though, that's.
Oh, not even close.
No, not even close, but I mean, it's.
Okay, does anybody else have any other suggestions? Because if not, I'm going to take the notes that we've made from tonight and come up with a draft of statement of why it's in the town's vital interest to update the town plan, which I will submit to you in a word document to be attached. And I will try to distill all of these ideas and not be overly verbose, you say, no more than one page?
One page would be nice.
Double spaced?
Well, it does have to be double spaced, one page. And try not to be five or do at least ten so I can read it.
Ten point.
So can you get this, your notes typed up and get them to everybody in forms of minutes or something? So that we can use that as a jumping off spot for this?
I can't do it tomorrow, but I can work on it Thursday. I'm going to Mount Pilgrim tomorrow with Nelson.
Okay.
Are your?
Go ahead.
Yeah, one of the things is, is, and as you know, where I've been pushing some of my stuff and trying to get things done is our deadline comes up on, is it September thirtieth? They get this in, so anything you can get. And what I'm doing is I have given right access to Adley, Natalie?
Natalie.
Natalie?
And to me.
And, and I.
And I want to suggest that you give it to Rosemary.
Okay.
It's Rose Pell.
She just needs to send me that, her address and a whole bunch of other stuff.
Okay, my, okay, I'll leave, I'll give you my contact information.
She's, she's on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, in order for me to go in and give access, or what I do is I do part of it, then the state has to finish it and give the rest. So, but I need some information, which I'll ask you for there versus here.
Okay.
Because it's somewhat where you live and phones and all kinds of other stuff.
Now, is this, to some degree, this application process and how they, once the application is in, how they look at it, is it somewhat competitive?
Oh, yeah.
So it's very competitive. So then, a- a- as we talked about before, there are many towns who are gonna be saying the same things that they need as us. So in some ways, we need to differentiate, we need to include those, but why our needs are in fact more important to the state perhaps? Not just to us.
Right.
And I think that has a great deal to do with our location in the state.
I think it does.
And the Huset River running through it.
And all of that.
Proximity to the tri-state, the tri-state notion.
And the continuation of the Berkshire. It's not a dirty word, Berkshire, it's a, it's a good word.
I did one of those, it's a good word. We've got money for the sewer, come on. Just send me what you got. I'll tell you. Worst, worst could happen to this, I'll send you a bag something with a note on it.
Okay, all right.
Remember, you're selling the town is what you're doing here for winding the grant. That's really what you're looking at. You're, you're not, you're not trying to write your town plan. You're not pushing major, a major change upon the state. What you're looking for is how you're gonna meet the state regulations and how you're gonna do it and why you need to do it.
We keep saying, why, why do people want to come there? All right, just ask a question. Why does the coach of the San Antonio Spurs buy a piece of land in Pownell for seven hundred something thousand dollars? It sits there, this, this, you know, come on, he's not a stupid man. He's not afraid to live here and a lot of good people aren't afraid to live here and they've lived here a long time. We just need to, just get a little more positive.
And, and I think in, in this, in this process, when you're asking somebody or organization for something is, I think it's always good to talk about what you're going, going to do for them, why it's important to them, not just for you. Yes, we need X, Y, and Z, but this in turn could be good for you because. And that's.
So give me the because so I can.
The because is visibility, is promoting the brand from the get-go. Now, you don't have to drive halfway through into the state to get Vermont. You get Vermont right now. You don't get depression, you don't get downtrodden now. You get a glorified gateway to this beautiful valley. You open up the valley a little bit, you have some, the beauty's there and it shouldn't be hidden. And that's what you have, you have the potential to market the state at the doorstep.
It's got a hook on it, Vermont town.
Yeah.
Market the state at the doorstep, listen to this phrase make it.
I'm just talking.
It's what you do well.
Okay. All right, we have a plan. You can work on Thursday, I can work on Thursday. Any other suggestions? Okay, hearing none, what other business do we have to come before the board?
Yes, if there's any public comment.
I just want, I just wanted to mention one thing, I think when you distilled Jim's notes from that meeting of the thirteen, I'm just gonna quote this quick paragraph. Of the thirteen or so elements required by twenty-four V S A, the most important is the land use plan and the next most important is probably the economic development plan, which becomes effective July one, uh, twenty twelve. I just wanted to point that out as two important things.
Okay, thank you very much. That was from a meeting of May two thousand twelve, as I recall.
Uh, I think so, yes.
That's what we were working on before we renewed the existing plan, so we get time.
Okay, there is an opportunity for public comment, but I don't see any of the members of the public here except our cameraman. Welcome to comment if he wishes. And hearing none, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And there's a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.